Hey, this is Jason Moss with the Georgia Manufacturing Alliance and Manufacturing News Network. We're really excited about our call today. Today's March 30th and we just found out through some news releases over the weekend, President Trump has extended our time in time out for through the end of April. We're going to talk a little bit more about that, give you some details on that. But the goal for this call is we want to make sure that we are, that we're working together as a community, we're sharing with each other and we're sharing best practices. This call each Monday at 10 o'clock is a town hall where we open it up to all the folks in the community to come in and again, kind of share some best practices, see how we can support each other and give you the updates as we know them. You know, today we've got two folks that are going to be on the call, Mr. Russ Dunlap. He is with Taylor English Duma, it's a law firm here in Atlanta, one of the largest in Southeast. And they're going to give us a little bit of insights on some of the things. They've got a really great program where they do legal updates and kind of talk about what's going on and specifics about the legal side of the business as we work through that. And then also we have Mr. Tom Valentine from Valentine Enterprises. And Tom is a past Director of Works here in Atlanta, which is a warehouse.
Education Research Council.
Exactly, that was exactly just about what I was going to say. And Tom's going to share with us a little bit about some of the stuff that's sort of in the freight management that will impact manufacturers. And I think he's got some really unique perspectives on that for supply chain and logistics. So we got a great call lined up. I am going to open it up, actually what I'd like to do is have Russ come back online with us. Here, take this. Sorry about that, I've got a cellphone that somebody needs to answer, not me. What we're going to do is talk to Russ just a little bit. They've got a really, Taylor English puts out again, a news brief, a legal brief each, you know, I say each week, but I think daily get updates on that. And we have shared that as on our webpage. I'm going to hop over real quick and just show you, well, yeah, I'm going to hop over real quick and show you where that's at so that you can find it if you need to take a look. Stand by just a second. We're sharing this information on our webpage. If you've not found it yet, we want to make sure that you know where it's at under the news tab. Manufacturing News Network. If you hadn't dug around through this page a little bit, feel free, there's lots of information. There's a little video on here and then we're placing breaking news on this page. We've got several pieces that we'll be updating, of course, today. But under this Free Resources tab, there's legal content, kind of news updates. These are all PDFs that have been provided through Taylor English as it relates to kind of how, what's going on in the business world relative to the coronavirus and how we're all working through that. So that's a place that you can go or try to keep that news feed updated as we can. So, but with that, what I want to do is kind of hop over to Russ and kind of, if you would, just give us a little bit of a summary of what you guys are seeing and what you're sharing through the news brief.
All right, everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Like Jason said, my name is Russ Dunlap. I'm an attorney at Taylor English Duma, we're a general practice firm in Cobb. We have something like 180 attorneys now. My practice is patents, you know, extra property, which is not that relevant to the coronavirus response. So I am updating more on what the firm is doing and some of the updates they provided to us. I can't really dive down deep into the legal issues on labor and employment and contracts and things like that. We might have a couple of other attorneys on the call from the firm that might be able to answer some questions in that area, but that's not my area of practice. So I can just kind of give you an update. We are, we have a team of attorneys that are basically providing daily, even multiple times a day, updates on what is going on nationwide and locally, state and state to state on different actions the government is taking related to the coronavirus. You know, for example, we got a circulation update this morning. They basically said, well, Jason said, we have four more weeks, according to President Trump, of national social distancing recommendations, basically until the end of April. Now, you know, in the alert, you know, it says, you know, the national guidelines are not mandatory. They just create a default standard, you know, the national, the federal government's not saying, everybody has to do this, or you know, you will be arrested or fined or anything like that. It's just that, you know, he's setting a national guideline that hopefully the states take up individually or local municipalities. Yeah, let's see, what else is on the updates here? You know, there's some Supreme Court updates, like the Georgia Supreme Court. They're actually switching over, there are a lot of courts, including the Georgia Supreme Court, that are switching over to virtual cases. So they'll hear arguments instead of at the court, you know, on a Zoom call almost like this one.
Wow.
So we are posting updates like these daily. There's the updates that Jason is posting on the GMA website. We actually have a blog that is just dedicated solely to coronavirus updates. It's, actually, I think I sent you the link, Jason, maybe if you want to circulate that. I sent it to the work mill. So we have a team of attorneys led by Mitzi Hill is one of the attorneys. And I want, hoping to get her involved in the upcoming legal call that we're going to start scheduling with the GMA. She's the one that is kind of keeping track of everything and kind of coordinating our responses as a firm. But, you know, we have attorneys that are, especially our labor and employment attorneys and our corporate attorneys that are focused on contracts and, you know, labor and employment issues with furloughing, you know, employees and things like that. They are all very busy and working very, very hard to keep updated on what's going on right now. We're in sort of a brand new world, a brand new legal environment. And a lot of things like this, something like this hasn't happened before. So there's not a lot of previous case law, for example, to pull from, say, okay, well, this has happened before and this is what the legal situation, this is how it was dealt with previously from a legal standpoint in the courts. That really is not the case here. And there's going to be a lot of new litigation and a lot of new case law, a lot of new laws that it's kind of a new frontier that, you know, needs to be sorted out. It's going to be sorted out in the coming months. So we, as a firm, are working very hard to keep updated on that.
Yeah. And Russ, I really appreciate you leading the pack here. I mean, Russ is, just so you guys kind of have a foundation, is Russ has been really involved with GMA over the past several months. And he, again, is focused as a patent and trademark in the patent and trademark world, which really serves our members well. And it's great to be able to have Taylor English onboard as a partner because, again, it was 160, 180 lawyers that you guys have in the firm that we can, we have access to and we have resources to be able to pull from. On Wednesday, we're scheduling, so what we're doing is we're changing the model just a little bit for GMA and for these calls. So each Monday at 10 o'clock, we're going to do a town hall like this. We're bringing a variety of different thought leaders in the space to share with you what's going on in their world and how it impacts manufacturing and how it impacts our member base. And Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we'll have a call at 10 o'clock as well. And we're going to mix those topics up, but this Wednesday, so Tuesday, we're going to do one on finance, specifically how this is impacting your bottom line. Again, everything is fluid right now in business. So I believe Laura Madajewski is going to be able to help us through that piece with HLB Gross Collins. She's been pretty active with us and supporting us in that. Russ and his team through Taylor English are going to help us on the legal side on Wednesday. Thursday, we're still kind of a little bit up in the air finalizing that. And then on Friday, if you guys missed it, we do a Fun Fridays. If you were on the Fun Friday call, raise your hand. If you were on the fun, okay. If you were not on the Fun Friday call, we do it at 4 o'clock on Friday. It was a hoot, it's archived on our webpage. I'd encourage you to go back and look at it, we had a good time. So that's kind of the layout. We are going to do a Monday 2 o'clock Task Force Call for companies that have resources or that want to get involved and play an active role in combating the coronavirus with the, again, with the resources that they've got available. So Monday will be two calls and then the rest of the week will be one call throughout the week. And anybody can plug into these calls, but we do ask that you register online through the webpage so that we'll be able to kind of track what's going on there. Now, what I'd like to do, again, if we don't have the event up yet, but we are going to do a legal call on Wednesday this week and Taylor English is going to kind of lead the pack on that, give us some insights on that. We'll identify who's going to be on the call in the show notes. So, Russ, again, thank you so much for that. We're going to probably, we're going to open this back up for Q and A here in just a minute. But I wanted to bring Tom in because I know that Tom's got some insights and we talked a little bit about even some kind of legal stuff in his world. And Tom is, again, a great business leader, been a partner with GMA for years through the Work Association and through APICs. And we've known each other for years. And he's got some really great expertise in freight management. And as you guys might imagine, freight management is a little tricky these days. So Tom, if you wouldn't mind, kind of hop on, tell us again, your company, your title, your role, you know, some of the volunteer stuff that you guys have been doing and then maybe some insights on what's going on in the freight management space.
Super, thank you, Jason. Appreciate the opportunity to be here, join the group here at GMA this morning. My name's Tom Valentine, I'm the President of Valentine Solutions. Not Enterprises, Jason, it's still Valentine Solutions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, no worries. And we've been in business now for, coming up on about 10 years. We're actually a sales organization, all of our team members are remote. We actually represent a multitude of different solution providers. And we service and have a broad scope of services for four different buckets, right? In the freight management, supply chain, warehousing and distribution. So we give visibility to a lot of different things that's going on in the environment here today. And what we do is we actually address different challenges that companies have and we make some solutions providers to make sure that challenges being met and/or exceeded from the value proposition that we bring to our customers. So that's what we do. My background, Jason alluded to it a little bit. Actually, in the beginning, first season of my life was in a semiconductor distribution business. So that gave us a little different perspective on things. And then in 2002, started getting into the logistics space. And I've been in there ever since, started with a small, midsize, third-party logistics company, non-asset based. So it is, really gave us a little bit peek behind the curtains in regards to, you know, how things operate and how freight actually moves throughout the country. Before it gets to the distribution center or, you know, from a lot of you on the call today, from actually the manufacturer out to your distributor network, B to B or B to C. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes, Jason was kind enough to ask me to share some thoughts and kind of what we're seeing here in this unique timeframe that we're all challenged with. So if you don't mind, feel free to chime in via the chat and we'll try and address as many questions that you have. If we can't get to them on the call here today, I'm on LinkedIn. Please look up Tom Valentine on LinkedIn and you can contact and reach out to me directly and I'll be more than happy to do what we can to help you out and even to answer your questions. So with that being said, what we're seeing a lot of in the freight management side of the equation is the carriers and the impact that the carriers are actually having in the marketplace right now. They're faced with a lot of different challenges, not just the interstate of Georgia, but of course across the United States. Carriers are deemed as what's called an essential service. Essential services are permitted to continue to operate even when the state is deemed by their state governor as a stay-at-home, which means we literally last week spent a lot of time working with customers that literally overnight shut down their operations. So what does that mean? There's a trickle-down effect and there's a trickle-up effect. So it's both downstream and upstream. And a lot of those things, details that affect even you as manufacturers, you may want to keep in mind, in case you reach that point, and some of those challenges that you may be facing, maybe a couple of these tips can help you out as well. So the carriers have been providing regular updates. You can either go to their websites, if you're on their email list, depending if you're connected directly with the carriers. If you have third-party solution providers that you're working with, also doing a great job of keeping everybody up to date, not just with the carrier side of the equation, but also from a market standpoint. So there's a lot of resources out there, a lot of information. It's at your fingertips, don't be afraid to go out there and grab that. So the carriers as an essential service, they're still moving their freight and carriers and terminals all over the country. Now, just to give you an example, we did run into a situation with a customer in California where the carriers do have the opportunity and the ability to what they refer to as an embargoed terminal. An embargoed terminal is a nice way of putting it that we're not going to ship into, basically, we're not going to pick up and we're not going to deliver any goods into those particular terminals. That is strictly for the safety of the drivers and the employees of the carriers. So if they believe that they are at a high risk, they have the ability to embargo a terminal. It's been pretty limited, I must say, that we've seen, but the carriers do have that right to do that. We saw that in some of the high COVID-19 areas out in California. But that doesn't mean that your freight can't get to, can't get to you or get to your distributor or consumer. What it means is that we just have to find another way to do it. And it may add another day or two in transit. So on behalf of the carriers and truck drivers out there in the marketplace today, I implore each and every one of you, patience, patience, patience. They're working around the clock to try and get freight moved throughout the country. I had a great question from a customer two weeks ago in regards to movement of freight. They're actually located in the state of Maine and some of their supply chain comes out of Florida. But going across terminals, it goes through, their freight would go through states that are considered stay-at-home. Just so you know, your freight does not get routed around those states. Freight, because it's an essential service, is allowed to flow back and forth through the regular terminal network as long as it's not embargoed. So please know that, again, your freight will typically be transported on a normal basis the way it typically moves and is typically routed, even if it's a stay-at-home state. We're seeing a lot with protection of drivers, both on the carrier side, as I mentioned, the embargo, that's one aspect, but also on the manufacturer side, a lot of the shoes that you guys are into today, right? So some, a lot of my customers that are manufacturers, they've put in place, usually they welcome the drivers inside their facility. They usually have a comfortable place for them to relax while they're getting their shipment unloaded or something of that nature. Well, a lot of that has changed because of COVID-19. A lot of the drivers aren't even allowed to come in and take a restroom break. They may not be allowed in the facility. We've heard of some manufacturers and distribution centers trying to take drivers' temperatures and things of that nature. That's all protocol, carrier by carrier. The majority of them are out there publicizing information that, you know, no one's allowed to touch their drivers, interact with their drivers, keeping that personal respective space for the protection of the drivers as well. So a lot of things are happening in that particular area and everybody is checking and adjusting. So again, please be patient and also be kind. We've had some situations that we've heard of where, you know, temperatures have risen. But please, we're all facing this together, we're all in it together. As long as we can work together, we can get through it together. So be kind to your neighbor, be kind to your teammates, be kind to your carriers and their drivers. There's an organization right here out of Georgia, Atri, A-T-R-I. They have great information, if you want to know what's going on as well. I believe the website's atri.org. Rebecca Brewster is the CEO and she's here, right here in Marietta. They do a fabulous job of providing information from a driver and trucking standpoint as well. Let's see here. Force majeure. Force majeure is a legal term and Russ probably speak even more to it. But we actually had a situation or a conversation, I should say. Carriers have the ability to invoke force majeure, which basically means due to circumstances beyond our control that previous contracts, agreements, things of that nature that may have been in place with you as a manufacturer or you as a distributor or supplier, go out the window because of extenuating circumstances, which gives them the ability to potentially change their SLAs or service standards and even up to change their pricing given market conditions. So another thing with force majeure is who is accountable or whose responsibility for various fees or charges. So I'm going to walk you through a quick example that we were, have been mitigating most of all these past two weeks, actually, with a lot of our customers on the 3PL side. And I guess a shout out to Ascent Global Logistics, who we do a lot of freight management with, has done a fabulous job in working with a lot of the customers in the carriers to help mitigate an example or two I'm going to share with you right now. So we've had manufacturers in the supply chain that produce product, if ship product, it's in transit on the way to the manufacturer to feed their manufacturing facility. During that timeframe, we've had governors come out and declare the state stay-at-home, literally overnight. So customers have actually, manufacturers have actually shut down while the freight is in transit.
I think we just lost your audio. Tom, I think, Tom, I think we just lost your audio, can you hear us okay? Or is that just me? Russ, can you hear me okay?
Okay. Either with your carriers or work with your 3PLs directly so that you can actually help mitigate that freight that's in transit. You can easily stop anything being picked up from that point on. But what happens to that freight in transit, it only has a couple of options. One, it can be received at your facility, which is highly recommended. Find a way to get received, if you have to bring somebody in, even a supervisor or such who can drive a forklift, get that received and unloaded. Number two, it can be rerouted and sent back to point of origin. That's going to add cost into the equation. And three, the carrier has the opportunity to potentially store it at their terminal, which is really not the most optimal thing to do at this point in time since we don't know the length of time and there's going to be storage costs that are incurred. So the best way to do it, let's avoid all those situations. Communicate, communicate, communicate. And again, get your carriers or 3PLs directly involved. If you need some help or have questions, please contact me, I'd be happy to do that as well. Jason, if there's anything else you'd like me to cover, please fire out a question, I'd be happy to do so. But those are some of the key things that we're really seeing here in the marketplace today that's been unique. Again, if I could leave you with a couple of thoughts, communication, patience and be kind.
Right, that's great. I mean, that's, you know, that's a great impact input, Tom, I really appreciate that. And that's one of the things, you know, we did a call last week and we had Scott Duma on the line with us and we did a call on sales and marketing. And that's, that's one of the things, we kind of talked about the force majeure and things that you can do and can't do. But, but I believe in everybody that I've talked to in the legal space, everybody says, just try to work it out. Don't go, I mean, get it through communications and conversations, don't go the legal route unless it's absolutely necessary and that needs to be your last option. You know, you've been dealing with these folks upstream and downstream for long enough and what we need to do is we need to continue these relationships and grow them. I mean, now's the opportunity. People will really figure out what kind of business you run, what kind of leader you are in tough times. That's where they figure that out. And people will remember that long after this is blown by. So, you know, like you said, Tom, I really appreciate, do the right thing. I mean, if you open up the day, the way that I look at it, you know, I mean, I'm looking at my bills, looking at my, I mean, we got rent, we got, I mean, our expenses continue on, right? And some people, you know, kind of relate that to karma. You know, what goes around comes around, you know? If you want your bills to be paid, if you want people to pay the bills or do you, you know, you might want to, you know, figure out how you can pay, continue to pay your bills. And, you know, I mean, we all have different challenges and situations in our business and we're all in different places. Some people have a really big rainy day fund and some people are making it week to week in business. And so everybody's in their own space, but do as best you can. You know, I believe, written in a good book long, long time ago, you know, do unto others, you know? And I believe that if we keep implementing that philosophy, all of us will be able to pull through this together as a community and I believe build even better and deeper and stronger relationships in our community and know who you can count on and know who you can go to. So again, those are, those are just, you know, some insight, insights from Jason Moss and the GMA philosophy. That's what we're going to do as an organization. We're going to do everything we can to make sure that we make it right. We love our folks and be there for them. So, but that, you know, those are, those are some of my thoughts. But what I'd like to do is open this up to the crew, to the folks that are on the call. I know that there's manufacturers, there's suppliers, there's, you know, a variety of folks on the call. So if you're not super familiar, I'll give you a quick training on Zoom. If this is, I know this is for some of you guys, this is some of your first time on Zoom. But if you, if you move your mouse or your cursor down to the bottom of the screen, you'll see a little menu pop up and there's a little microphone over in the far left corner. And if there's a slash to it, that means that your call, that your line is muted. If you click on that, that will unmute your line and you can ask a question. So I'd encourage you to unmute your line. Who's got the first question, feel free to go ahead and fire that off. If you, if you can't figure that out, Mike, okay? Share with Mike, what's your questions? Hold on just a second, we can't hear you. Is it just me, can't hear you, make sure. Your audio's not working, Mike. Yeah, we still can't hear you. So either you can just check to make sure, there's a little arrow beside the mic, microphone. There's a little arrow indicator up, click on that to make sure that you're using the right microphone, but we cannot hear you at all, Mike. And if we can't get your audio, feel free to tag, again, while you're down on the bottom of that little menu, there's a little chat bubble. If you click on that, you can actually type that in chat and we'll get your question answered that way. Okay? I'll unmute your line, Mike, stand by just a second, I can unmute it from this side. Mike, can you hear us? Nah, we still don't have audio. So if you would, click on the little chat bubble and type that in and then we'll try to get it answered through chat. All right. Who's got the next question? All right, Mr. Tony, how are things looking in your world, brother Tony Langford ASAP, ASAP, I'm sorry. Okay? Oh, is it just me? Maybe I'm not hearing it, stand by.
I'm not hearing it either.
Okay. Tony, can you hear us okay? Nope, I'm not picking up audio from Tony either, which is kind of odd because I know you've played this before. Okay, stand by.
Can you hear me?
Brittany, I can hear you fine.
Okay, good.
I was about to call out.
Doing a test.
All right, all right. And guys, just so you know, I mean, and feel free, if you want to practice one of these Zoom calls with us so we can make sure that we got good dialogue throughout the day, you can just give us a call and we can open up a call, make sure that you're, that you're familiar with it. But again, over in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see that little microphone. There's a little arrow beside it, a little up arrow. Click on that to make sure you can select different microphones. And just make sure that you put one, you know, you're connected to the right one and there's a way that you can test it as well when you're offline. So anybody else got any questions for either Tom or Russ at this point? I know we've got some. Tom, how are the facility personnel being protected?
Tom, you want me to take that?
Yeah, take that if you would.
Sure. So, uh, yeah, I see that. Great question. I believe that's from Michael. And, um, you know, it's really on a, on a facility by facility basis. Some of the same things, they, they're issuing gloves. They're also wearing, some of them are wearing masks. But it really comes down to on a, on a company by company basis. There's not necessarily a big protocol because everybody's handling it the best they can with the resources that they have available. So if they do have the personal protection available, they are utilizing that. Again, they're, they're kind of restricting the, the number of touches and the, any exposure from a freight management standpoint. So literally when the trucks are usually backing up and coming in, they're usually just opening up their doors and the drivers are usually staying put. They're not really coming into the facility anymore. And then as far as the personnel, again, that's, I mean, I can't, there isn't a protocol across all measures for all companies. Every company is, should have some type of protection policy or process in place. If not, you need to do that to do the best to protect because that is your first form of receiving product that's coming in that may or may not be contaminated or carrying a COVID-19 virus on the actual items. It doesn't live very long according to initial CDC standards in regards to on corriget. But it does have the ability to, to last longer on those type of substrates as opposed to an influenza. So there is concern there. Anything you can do from a personal protection, whether that's even food grade gloves, you know, that are disposable or even the work gloves, sanitize as much as you can. But again, it's on a company by company basis.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect. That sounds good. One of the other questions we had, Koki asked, what is the biggest ask for OTR drivers? What are, what's some of the challenges that they're facing? Or what are they asking for that can make their job easier for us as manufacturers? What can we do to, to make their job easier? Cause we know that they're, I mean, they're just like us. I mean, yeah, these guys are running roads and taking care of their family, but also providing for the nation. So what can we do to make it better and what, what's their biggest challenges as well?
Well, candidly, just about two weeks ago, one of their biggest challenges was pulling off side of the road and find a place to sleep. Because when initially the stay at home were enacted, all the public rest areas and such were all shut down.
Okay.
So they had really no facilities to use that they typically do on the road, which by the way, they, they were already in shortage with regards to because of hours restrictions, they were already getting log jam on expressways. That's why if any of us drive at night, you would see the 53 footers come and clear off the ramps. That's because there's just not enough parking for our trucks out on the, on our expressways.
Right.
So one of the biggest challenges right now is candidly is really just be nice. I mean, I hate to say that, but it sounds too simple, but we understand that, you know, if they have a load, if they have freight, they need to get that freight to its destination. And even though you may be deemed to stay at home, try to find an accommodation. We just had a situation last week, literally, I think it was Friday. That's why I was pushing that four o'clock call, Jason, where we had a customer that literally we, we got the carrier involved. We got the customer involved. They actually had somebody there within a two hour window late in the afternoon so that the carrier could just show up and unload the freight.
Right.
And that's what they're trying to do. They, you know, if they get trapped with freight, that's just, that's a log jam and it just has a bigger trickle down effect. And then we started talking about force majeure and legal issues and who's going to pay what when it's all said and done with. Those are a couple of the biggest challenges, you know? They've become more of a loner too. So be nice to the drivers, be nice when they show up, wave to them, say hello. But you know what? Maintain that, maintain that distance and respect their right as well. Because they don't want to get infected. They want to continue to work as long as they can as well.
Yeah. Some of our drivers are big huggers and some are not. So, so either way, from a distance. Love on them from a distance. We did have one of those. Right, right, right. Exactly. We did have another question. It says, have there been any issues of freight itself? Items that nobody wants, maybe something that has come through New York or whatever. I mean, are you getting any, hearing anything about, you know, product coming in from a an area that's got, you know, high instances?
It's a high risk area.
Yeah. Are you seeing anything on the, on the product itself being turned away because it came from, say, New York, California?
Well, a lot of that's been already kind of shut down, candidly speaking.
Okay.
You know, especially from the import export side.
Right.
You know, our ports, especially Savannah, I mean, I get, I get reports multiple times a day directly from the port. And they've done a really good job of, of, of kind of, I guess shutting that down to an extent. But again, it, it's, it's a little bit of everywhere. We really don't know. I, I'm probably not the expert to answer that from a product by product standpoint. The carriers are going to make that determination at the end of the day because they're the ones who's hauling the freight.
Yeah.
But I mean, we're, I, I mean, I have not seen where, where freight has been refused to be picked up because the only time we've seen that is if, if the area is embargoed by the carrier. And that's all freight. That's not any one freight in particular. It's because that area is at high risk.
Okay. They're not doing it per company. They're doing it per area like county or whatever and saying, you're not.
That is correct.
Bringing freight in or out of that area.
Yeah. Like Oklahoma was a good example, you know, a lot of, you know, California, New York, Ohio, Pennsylvania. They all did, you know, the state, the governor came out and did it by the entire state and shut it down, literally overnight, Michigan as well. Whereas Oklahoma actually was going county by county. So they were looking at, at where COVID-19 was, was at highest concentrations and trying to mitigate it county by county. But eventually, because we all work in the supply chain side, right? And it crosses over different areas, depending if that terminal happened to be in one of those counties, it could affect the transportation, you know, the, the possibility of the freight. So we had some customers that their county in Oklahoma was not even, was not deemed as a stay at home. But because it was such a challenge to try and get their, get their products, their manufacturer, they decided it was in the best interest of everybody as well as the safety of their employees to shut down for a while as well.
Right, right. That's a, that, you know, I mean, and, and that actually leads right into this next question that Carol Nagel asked is, how soon do you feel that business and industry will align with the new protocols and put them in place to manage this new, manages more efficiently, but also still safely? You know, we're trying to work through this challenges as well. So I'd be curious what you think the ramp up time for the new normal process of delivering goods is.
That's a great question. That's a great question.
Coming together, industry wide at that.
Let me, let me see here. Let me look around. All right. Here's my Valentine magic pen wand.
Right.
Carol, I wish I had that answer. As you well know, just over the weekend, I mean, the, the president was hinting at the Easter timeframe to start moving commerce a little bit. And that got pushed out another two weeks till the end of April.
Right.
So there is that fine balance between public health and also the, the entire economy. You know, there's a balance. I know that they're watching the numbers. The best way I can probably answer that is, is make sure you're, you're staying up to date with regards to the CDC and their policies that are in play as well as the infection rate. Because there seems to be pockets of very high concentration. There's still parts of the country that have limited. I mean, even here in the state of Georgia, I mean, my youngest son is a sophomore at the Georgia Southern University. And he decided to stay put. Today was their first day of starting their online version of classes. So they're going to finish out the semester, but there's really no cases in the Statesboro area. Knocking on wood there. And we just felt it safe and supplies were, were still getting there and readily available. So made a family decision for him to stay, stay in place. But as far as the, the economy and businesses and where we're going to be ramping up, that's, that's not a Tom Valentine or Valentine Solutions question. I do think what I can ask, answer is the new norm. You know, we do represent a company, I'll do a shout out Lean Corps and they do a great job. They actually teach kaizen events, lean six sigma to Georgia Tech as well as online. And they do a great job of lean processes and a lot of us in the lean industry, lean marketplace know what the term PDCA means, plan, do, check, adjust. And they do an awesome job even in their training. So I will pose that question to them and Carol, if you'd like to reach out or connect to me directly, I will get you a better answer because I know that they are already have been putting online some training to adjust to this new norm. And what we need to do is manufacturers, as suppliers and as distributors of how we're going to address this new norm and putting in those processes and places to kind of cut down on a potential future infection or pandemic that may come down the pike.
That's a great answer, Tom. I definitely appreciate that. And, and you know, and we're all talking about new norms in, in our space, you know? I mean, so, so in the legal realm, you know, Russ, I know you guys have new norms and how you're working through, through business and even in, in GMA. I mean, that's one of the things, you know, we're working, trying to figure out as an association, how we can best serve our members and, and folks in the overall manufacturing community. And we went from, I mean, from running a hundred miles an hour to a dead stop about three weeks ago. And fortunately, we had a few weeks ramp up time in preparation, getting ready for this to be able to convert to a fully virtual association. And, and it's tough for me, man. I'm an extrovert. I'm a big hugger, man. If you guys know me, you know, this is tough on me, man. I want to, I want to be out there with you guys. But, um, but our goal is to, to continue to do, again, I said it before, our, although our mission to support Georgia's manufacturing community has not changed, our tools and our processes have. And, and everybody in every aspect, I don't know anybody that's not yet been touched and, and had to make some kind of changes in, in the way that they operate. We don't know what those new, you know, new processes are, but we're trying to do, you know, again, we're trying to, trying to give you guys the best that we got. We're, we're coming up with new ideas, new programs and new systems and, 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 you know, there's no playbook for this yet. I, I, I mean, I'm right in there with you guys. I want you to understand that we as an association, we're right there with you. But we're committed to figure out, figure out the best solution. And, and again, so like, like I said, we're going to be doing 10 o'clock calls, you know, Monday through Thursday. We're going to have a bonus call on Monday at two o'clock for the task force. So if you have things that you'd like to contribute in, you know, in combating this war. And then we'll, our Friday call, we're pushing it to four o'clock so that everybody can have a nice cold one if they'd like and join us for the call. If, if, again, I'd encourage you to put these things on your calendar and plug into them as much as we, as much as you can. I do know for a fact that the, the feedback that we've gotten from the people that have, have engaged in these calls has been through the roof. And I thank you. I know all of us are busy. We've got a lot of stuff going on, trying to create that new normal. But we're going to be here. If by chance you miss them, we're going to be archiving these calls so you can hop back in and listen to them. But we want you to be involved in, in feedback because I know that there's, I love the, one of the things I love most about GMA and doing what we get to do every day is we get to hang around some really, really smart people with, with unique perspectives and, and life experiences and tools, knowledge that, that you can bring to the table. We do this for you so that you can share your best with the community. I mean, sharing best practices is the, is the foundation of GMA. And I believe that, that, that there will be really great things that come from these calls. I mean, you know, again, Tom and I've talked several times and I love picking his brain and same, same with Russ and the whole crew there at Taylor English. I love finding out what they bring to the table and their vantage point. And being able to share this is, is, I think, you know, this, this is a, this is a, a cool tool to be able to do it using Zoom. We are playing with, and if any of you guys have got experience with doing, going live with things, we're looking at doing LinkedIn Live, Facebook Live and YouTube Live and attaching all of those through this, this platform. That is scary. I never thought I would be getting into this space, but you know, you do what you do. You've got to be able to touch people and get two people wherever they're at. You know, we got a Twitter account, we got an Instagram, but I don't know, we're going to do anything with that yet, but we'll see. So, but if you got any experience in that, you want to share with that, feel free to give us a call. I'm, I'm all, all ears for that. But, uh, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. I wanted to open us back up with Russ as well. And, and, you know, I mean, you, you've sat in on a few of these calls. I'd love to get your feedback on what your experience has been with the calls and, and maybe some insights on what we, we can expect for our Wednesday legal call.
All right.
To prep for this, just so you know.
Yeah. Give me minutes.
Yeah, minutes, minutes. We're all about to say.
Let's see. Um, yeah, I was just on the call on Friday and wasn't able to get on any of the calls last week. We had a bunch of different attorneys on each of the different calls. And they all had positive things to say. For our, for our call coming up on Wednesday, we'll have a, a few different attorneys talking about different issues. The force majeure clause, clauses, you know, labor and employment issues, posting requirements. I, I'm just looking at our blog, for example. I mean, we had three posts yesterday, one about the SEC changing rules. The, you know, posting requirements for the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. You know, issues with loans, EIDL loans and emergency grants. So, so I'm going to pull for that call, I'm going to try and pull a bevy of attorneys with different insights on those specific issues. And hopefully we'll have, you know, quite, quite a bit of experience online. My suggestion for anybody that's interested in the call, reach out, if you have an outside general counsel or in a house counsel, reach out to them and see if they can join. Because, uh, you know, that, a lot of the aspects of that call will be very helpful to them in getting updates in, in those areas. I know I'm going to be reaching out to a few of my clients for, uh, you know, just to, to get their actual attorneys on the call as, as well as leadership positions that, you know, that are in the position to make those decisions, you know, where we can help inform, you know, the legal issues surrounding those. And, uh, you know, other than that, uh, you know, I think these calls are, are going well. You know, I've, I've enjoyed the time I've, I've got to be on the call, especially Fun Friday was pretty relaxing, good, good in cap to the week.
Perfect, perfect. I appreciate that, Russ. And, and guys, you know, we are going to keep these calls really tight at, at, at an hour or under. You know, if you've got additional questions, what we do, just so you, so you have a feel, I'm going to hop back over to this page so that you can see kind of how to navigate if you haven't played with that yet. Let's take just a second here. Just stand by. Okay. So this is the, the GMA homepage in just a second. So this is the GMA homepage. Most of the information that we're sharing is under this. So you can see what I'm seeing. Most of the information that we're sharing is under this news tab, manufacturing news network. There's, you know, of course intro video that I'm all update, but breaking news, you know, and this is what's going on in the space. Each time we do one of these calls, we archive the call. So we're videoing or saving the video. We post it out on YouTube and then what we do is we post it out on a blog link. And so this blog link is a, you know, a replay of that live call. And so you can see some familiar faces on there. Uh, and this kind of recaps what we got covered in the thing. If there are specific show notes, if there's things that we talked about in the call, we'll put links to them. So Tom, you had mentioned an association name that, that we'll need. I'll gather that information from Tom. Tom, if you want to just either, either put it in the show notes, I mean, in the, in the
In the chat.
In the chat, send that to me. I'll scrub that or you can email it to me and we'll make sure that we put that in this town hall overview as well. So we're going to put these in the event, like I said, you can't get to the call, the live call. We want you to plug in if you have a camera. We really want you to turn the camera on so we can kind of connect the face with the name. That always adds a lot of, lot to it. Uh, this is our Fun Friday. This tells a little bit about, you just need to, you just need to go to this page. Now, I will tell you that this is absolutely politically not correct. I will just, I will qualify that. It is in the, you know, it says adults only. There's nothing like too racy, but is, is a little bit on the edge in some areas. I will just, I will qualify that, it is in the, you know, it says adults only, there's nothing like, too racy, but is a little bit on the edge in some areas. Uh, we have had images shared with us from all over the planet. Now, I will show you how to, how to navigate this page, because I think you'll enjoy this, this will kick your Monday off with a, with a smile if you hadn't been here before. But on the Fun Friday picks, each week, we're going to upload a new catalog, I mean, a new, um, album. This is our first week, so, um, and again, I will try not to offend anybody, but if you look at this and just, you know, don't, don't, don't do it in the mixed crowd, because it's can be kind of funny, but. But you click on the album, this works on your mobile phone too, so if you need to chuckle throughout the week, you just go to Fun Friday, funfridaypicks.com, and these are the images that are on there. I will like, show you this one, if you click on the image itself, it will, and then click the viewer, it makes it full screen. And then you can navigate through the images. So that's, that's, that's the way to use this tool. And if I can figure it out, close that. But I would encourage you to go in, and if you got any really funny memes and you want to text those to us, feel free, uh, they'll probably be included in the next album. So every Friday, we're going to roll out a new album, we got some really good stuff for next week as well, so. But we announced that on our Fun Friday call, but this Fun Friday picks are going to be there, available anytime that you want, though. Uh, we do have the coronavirus resources tab. This is information provided by our friends over at Taylor English, these are the, the law updates. Uh, we're going to be doing some finance stuff as well, we've got two or three, uh, great accounting firms that are working with us. And they're going to be sharing some of their white papers as well through this, uh, this manufacturing task force. This call we do on Mondays at 2 o'clock, and this task force is about, if you have resources that you, you got, that you could put to bear in the fight against the coronavirus, let us know, I mean, we've already had companies that manufacture ventilators right here in Georgia calling, saying, hey, man, we got 40 of those things on the shelf. How can we help? And I'm like, well, let me make a phone call, and within 30 minutes, the governor's office was calling them. Coordinating the next step with that, but, uh, so, so if you, if you, if you can make the, you know, mask, or if you can contribute in any way, we're going to be doing this call at 2 o'clock. And then to register for these events, if you just go to the upcoming events tab, so go to events. And then upcoming events, this gives you a list of all the events that we've got scheduled. So the call that we're on right now, we've got a task force call at 2 o'clock, we're going to do one on, uh, human resources tomorrow at 10:00. So that's our Tuesday call, our Wednesday call will be legal, and our Thursday call, I think, is going to be finance. And then our Friday is just going to be our Fun Friday at 4 o'clock. So that gives you an opportunity to kind of see a little bit about how to navigate the site, some of the things that are in there, this COVID-19 info. This gives you a little bit about our response to it, and then we have a live link to the Georgia map, and it'll pop up in just a second, maybe. We've got so much stuff going on, but this gives you a, a link, so you can see, this is actually tied straight into the, the, the state map, and if you click on a county, right now, we've got 100 in Gwinnett, 145, one death, and this gives you sort of the count, if you're interested in looking at stats. You know, that was, um, but there's a lot of, and, but again, this is a real-time map as the state updates the numbers. Um, and with that, I think that's all we have in this page, I'll stop to share. And with that, it looks like we got some, got some really good links, I'll make sure I pull these out of the show notes, we're right on time with this. And any, any last thoughts, anything anybody wants to share real quick? Going once, Tom, you got anything else you'd like to add?
I'd just like to say, uh, thank you to you, Jason, and the GMA, as well as everybody that's on the call here today. And candidly, all the manufacturers and shippers and DCs here in the state of Georgia. Uh, we are the central port, central location for all hub logistics in the United States. But final words, if I can help, please reach out, uh, we'd love to be, have the opportunity to try to help you. But more importantly, again, just kind of going back to that golden rule, uh, in these challenging times, uh, please remember they are people too. And we are trying to, everybody's trying to get everything done. But let's cooperate, let's be kind, and, um, that'll go much, much further, not just in today's timeframe to get over this challenge. But as Jason had pointed out, in your future conversations and relationships, will be much more nurturing and beneficial if you're kind today.
Fantastic, Tom, I really do appreciate that, good words, good words. All right, Mr. Russ, anything that you'd like to add as we wrap this call up?
So I don't, I don't know, I think Tom encapsulated it perfectly, um, yeah, it's, and I think your attorneys will tell you the same thing. You know, the, you don't want to run to the attorney and have them draft a letter to, you know, destroy your contracts or anything like that, it's good to keep those relations intact. It never hurts to talk to an attorney, to say, okay, what are the landmines I got to look out for? But, um, yeah, in this situation, in this, in this environment, it, you know, Tom's absolutely right, we need, we need to work together.
Perfect, perfect, well, I really appreciate that. Well, guys, one thing I will do is I, you know, usually I go around the room and ask everybody what their favorite part was for today, we don't have time for that today, but what I am going to do is I'm going to post this link, I'll post this image. I want everybody to wave real quick. Uh, he took my phone, I can't do that crap. But, uh, what we're going to do. Yeah, yeah, actually, Brittany, that's great, that's, I would have never thought of that, I love hanging around smart folks, everybody hold your hand up, wave, everybody wave. All right, Brittany, you ready? All right, smile, all right, smile and wave.
I'm going to make my camera. There's a glare, smile.
Smile and wave, everybody's.
Wave, hold on. I'm going to take a couple.
Okay.
A lot of photogenic folks in here, perfect.
Cool, so we're going to post that picture with a link to this call on LinkedIn. And what we'd really love for you to do is we'd love you, for you to comment on the post and say what your favorite part was about the call today. And if it was beneficial to you, please share this, because we want to be able to help as many people as we can and not have to repeat all the data. So, uh, like it, and then, uh, comment on the post itself, and, and share your favorite part about what, uh, what we covered today. But with that, guys, it's been another great day at GMA, go love on folks, treat them the right way, and we'll see you guys next upcoming call. If you can make it on 2 o'clock call, great, if not, we'll see you on a call later in the week. Thanks, guys. See you.
Thanks, Jason, have a good day.
All right, Steve.
Thanks.